The Lee County Board of Commissioners November meeting to order. I would like to welcome everybody here in attendance in person with their mask on and six feet apart. And everybody that's watching and listening from home, welcome. Before I turn it over to Commissioner Del Palazzo, just to share with everyone, Commissioner Dodson is not with us tonight. He is in the hospital in pretty serious condition with COVID-19, and his family's asked for prayer. He is on a ventilator. So if you would please honor his family's request to keep him in your prayers and your thoughts. We certainly miss him being with us this evening. He, you know, as most of you know, did not run for reelection. So this was to be his last board meeting tonight. So we will definitely recognize him later, but I did want to let everyone know to keep him in your prayers and in your thoughts as we go through the meeting tonight and through the week. So ask Commissioner Del Palazzo if she'll lead us an invocation and the pledge, please.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to lead with honesty, integrity, and honor. We ask for your hand of protection over our county, state, and country. Be with us in this meeting and in the ones to come. And Lord, be with Commissioner Dodson. Give him health, Lord. Allow him to strengthen and come through this, Father. Pray for his family, that you give them peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. This is not intentionally so by any means, but has turned into be a pretty sad meeting this evening. Because before we move on into the rest of the meeting, again, a lot of you are aware of the passing of Liz Kavaskets a couple of weeks ago. She is a very special person to a lot of us here in this room, and there are people in the audience that have had the pleasure to work with Liz. She served Lee County in probably one of the most challenging times as far as planning board and board of adjustments. I know she presided over the longest board of adjustments hearing that we have ever had in Lee County, and I think it vied for the longest in the state. We started at six in the morning and we were...
Six in the evening?
In the evening, yes, thank you. It felt, yes, six in the evening, and we were walking out to our cars at 4:30 in the morning. So, but she was fair and just attention to detail and her communication skills and just the love of her adopted home here in Lee County was just incomparable. She loved life. Her family was definitely her number-one priority. And her husband, Don Kavaskets, is our GIS director, and a lot of us have been so blessed to have that family in Lee County for a number of years. So at this time, if you would join me in a moment of silence to honor Liz and appreciation for her life and for what she gave to Lee County. Thank you. Okay, are there any additional items to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I wish to present a resolution to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for a federal legislative proposal.
Okay, so, and I think everybody has the resolution in front of them at your seat. I think Ms. Gamble got that out to everybody via email. So we'll put that under New Business Item E. Any other additions to the agenda or a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Okay. All right, approval of consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, at this time, we'll call Karen Kennedy. Oh, there she is. I can't, you're behind the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's been a long time since I've presented in front of you all, so it's glad to be back. Tonight, we're having a public hearing for potential new community development block grant applications. As part of citizen participation requirements, when you apply for these funds, you have to have two public hearings. Tonight is the first of the two public hearings. Forgive me for reading, but there's a lot of information to give to you about this program and all that it entails so that we can conduct this as properly as we are supposed to. CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant. There are programs that have been in existence for many years. The county has been very successful administering these programs over the past, both for economic development and housing rehabilitation and other projects. The purpose is to allow residents and citizens an opportunity to express views about any priorities they would like the county to think about of the categories I'm going to explain in a few minutes. And all of these funds come from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, but are a pass-through through the state of North Carolina. The county and the city of Sanford are both considered in the small cities category versus an entitlement city. So we have to apply for funds, and we do not receive direct allocations. Whenever one of these projects is presented, we have to make sure that we meet three major criteria. They benefit low and moderate income persons, they prevent or eliminate slumming blight, or they address an urgent need. There are many community development activities that are allowable within this, and the state here has chosen to fund activities such as water and sewer infrastructure, neighborhood revitalization, economic development, and special allocations for disaster recovery and COVID-19. In the first category of economic development, those funds are administered by the Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division, and those projects sometimes provide site clearance, building, or infrastructural support for businesses that commit to job retention and creation. Sometimes there are awards and match requirements depending upon your county's tier ranking and the job's commitment. Applications are accepted on a rolling basis, and most of these applications are administered through our Economic Development Authority with Bob Joyce, Michael Smith, Jimmy Randolph, and those offices. Neighborhood revitalization is the one that you all are more familiar with, that are used for housing-related activities and community revitalization. They're competitive and due in actually the summer and the fall. Infrastructure is through the Department of Environmental Quality, Water Infrastructure, and they projects focus on water and sewer for low and moderate income areas, persons, and households. Those applications are also competitive and due in the fall. Another category is disaster recovery and medication that are administered by the Department of Public Safety, Office of Recovery and Resiliency. These funds are administered as a result of hurricane disasters and vary in nature based on the countywide needs assessment for the housing activities, economic relief, buyouts, and flood mitigation. These applications are also received on a rolling basis. Coronavirus is our newest category that has come about this year. They are also administered by the Department of Commerce. The maximum award is $900,000. Applications are accepted on a first-come, first-served basis since September 1st, and they include public services, public facilities, economic development activities to support individuals and communities during a public health crisis or with small business recovery. The North Carolina Department of Commerce notified us last week, this is one of the reasons we came tonight, was we were hoping to do a grant application, but they notified us on Tuesday, November 10th, that the money was gone for this first round. So this public hearing will hold us in place for a year in case a second round of coronavirus funding is rolled out for us to go into. Formal public hearings have to be held with every application round, and if awarded a CDBG grant, then there are many policies and plans that I would have to come back to you to adopt. One is in your package tonight that is a resolution about adopting a citizen participation plan, which also will last for a year in case we have other opportunities for grant funding. So that's why we decided to move forward. Ms. Gamble wanted me to remind you that she had told you we would be doing a second public hearing as a special meeting on November 30th. We will not be having that meeting because there's no application cycle to write currently. So if and when we get another one, we will come back to you. I'll let you entertain to open the floor for a public hearing.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Kennedy? Okay, so this is just for the public participation part? First public hearing, just move on.
And just a reminder after the public hearing before you vote, on the resolution, if you just take a vote, yeah?
Waive the policy. So, yeah, we'll need two motions, one to waive the policy and another one to take the actual vote. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Would there be anyone to speak in favor of this? Please, just come to the microphone. And if you would, please give your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Kerry Bishaw. Address is 403 West Mecape Street here in Sanford, North Carolina. I am the Executive Director of Brick Capital Community Development Corporation. We are a 30-year organization here in this community that has been long focused on affordable housing activities, and we are an organization that needs funding like CDBG funds in order to do the activities that we want to do. What makes housing affordable is the ability to utilize grant funding for the infrastructure and the building of affordable housing, and so getting funding like this from the state would be very necessary for the community here. There is a particular project that we are hoping to get some funding for regarding some infrastructure funds. There is a 16-acre site that Brick Capital currently owns that we would like to get some infrastructure funding for in order to build a new development there specifically for affordable housing for low- to moderate-income families. Affordable housing is something that is greatly needed and is very timely right now in the community. As many of you are probably aware, a lot of municipalities, cities, and counties have taken certain actions to ensure that affordable housing is brought forth to the community. Raleigh, for example, just passed an $80 million bond specifically for affordable housing activities. And so, again, I just want to state that I and Brick Capital are very in favor of CDBG funds here in Lee County and to be able to utilize them specifically for affordable housing activities for low- to moderate-income families.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Anyone else to speak in favor of? Or anyone to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public hearing now. And is there a motion to waive the policy? Okay, all those in favor of waiving the policy so that we could vote this evening signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is there another motion?
I would make it, I just don't, I forgot what it was.
I don't know quite how to phrase it.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the adoption of the Citizens' Participation Plan for Lee County during the North Carolina Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. I was looking for it, too.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Ms. Kennedy. And hopefully some additional funds will come down the pipe here shortly. Thank you very much. Okay, public comments, we have one person that signed up, Ms. Julie Davis. If you could come and to the mic and again, give your name and address for the record, please, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Julie Davis. I'm a veterinarian here in town, 1521 Broadway Road. I'm not sure if I'm in the right place at the right time or what I'm supposed to discuss, but I had a unfavorable interaction with animal control in the Sheriff's Department in the past couple of weeks, and it brought attention to myself as well as several others in the community, some who are here and some who asked me to speak for them regarding the Lee County Code with regards to animals. Some of the areas of the code are very unspecific regarding certain situations, and the wording and the way the code is set up puts 100% of the welfare and care of the animals on the county and the county's dollar, which kind of limits the ability of the community as a whole to save money for the county while still having the welfare of the animals within our county on their absolute best interest. A few specifics would be, like if a private citizen were to come across or find what was labeled as a stray dog or a feral cat, for example, they're not allowed to provide medical care according to the code, according to what the Sheriff's Department's interpretation of the code is. That private citizen is required to immediately contact Animal Control, who immediately takes that animal to the shelter. Our shelter is old. There's no two ways around it. My hospital is not a boarding facility, but we provide boarding, and my hospital's kennels, we have more of those in my hospital than they have at the shelter. It's horribly tiny compared to the need for this county. And I think that a lot of the code itself regarding animals, their welfare, more specifically what to do with the strays, the ferrets, and to be able to define a feral population for purposes of the law, needs to be kind of reassessed and reevaluated, taking into consideration some of the rescue groups, some of the feral cat, I hate to say, facilitators, but the people who try to take care of those groups, again, keeping in mind welfare above everything else, as well as veterinarians in the community, so that we can 100% abide by all the laws, codes, and regulations while at the same time actually providing the appropriate and correct welfare. There's quite a few instances where other individuals in the community have gotten into trouble for trying to trap spay and then release the feral cats, which are absolutely not able to be rehabilitated into a home or a lifestyle setting, so they absolutely cannot be brought back in as pets. But individuals are getting in trouble, and the big issue with the feral cats is that, you know, we can just remove them and euthanize them, all the animal shelter or the animal services would like to do, but they're just going to come back. More people are going to abandon pets, more people are going to leave them behind, the colonies and these populations are going to get bigger, and even though they do hurt the ecology in general, they do keep rodent populations under control in areas where there are a lot of people living. So being able to have the community volunteer to spend their own resources instead of the county's resources to spay and neuter these animals and to manage these populations and keep them under control would be of great benefit to the county as well as to the welfare of the animals that live in this area. I was told...
Nope. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Davis. We appreciate your concern and your comments. Thank you very much.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
She knows the House Board meeting is probably the best place, and that's going to be on Wednesday, to come address some of your concerns as well. I'm sorry?
This one?
Yes. Now, where are we having it? Here? And it'll be here at 7:00.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kennedy. Okay, we'll move on to...
I have one more question about the public comment.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
This public comment was submitted by Holly Height. I forwarded it to you all previously around October 23rd. She gave the address to go to Village Drive in Sanford. She states, "I would like to second the comments being made by the animal advocates at this meeting. I would love to see improvements for animal welfare in Lee County. I'm not sure if the trap and release program was ever started, but if it hasn't, I think there are a lot of people struggling to control the animal populations in their community but do not have the financial means to spay and neuter all the ferrets. Some assistance would be greatly appreciated in the task."
Thank you, Ms. Gamble. All right, so at this time, we've got a couple of presentations to make. I think I'll go ahead and do Commissioner Dodson's first, just to read it, and we will get it to him. Try to facilitate that quickly. The resolution reads, "Honoring Commissioner Kevin C. Dodson, whereas Kevin C. Dodson was elected to the Lee County Board of Commissioners in November 2016, and whereas Kevin C. Dodson served as Vice Chairman of the Lee County Board of Commissioners from December 2018 to November 2019, and whereas Kevin C. Dodson served on the Sanford Area Growth Alliance Board, Interlocal Committee, San Hills Mental Health Board, Fire Advisory Board, Joint Planning Commission, and Triangle J Council of Government, and whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the achievements of Commissioner Kevin C. Dodson and to express its appreciation for his dedicated service and contributions to Lee County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it expresses appreciation for Kevin C. Dodson's four years of public service as a Lee County Commissioner and genuine interest in and concern for the citizens of Lee County, and it wishes him continued success in all his future endeavors. Presented the 16th day of November 2020." So is there a motion to accept the resolution?
So.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Gamble, for getting that together. I guess I'll turn it over to you.
At this time, I'm going to go to the podium and present this. This resolution is to honor Ms. Dierumpel for her service, and I'll read it. Whereas Amy Dierumpel was elected and has served on the Lee County Board of Commissioners for 10 years, serving terms from years 2008 to 2010, 2012 to 2016, and 2016 to 2020. Whereas Amy M. Dierumpel served as Chair of the Lee County Board of Commissioners from December 14 to November 2020. Whereas Amy M. Dierumpel is an active member in the community, having served on many boards and committees during her tenure as a Commissioner, including Social Services Board, Library Board of Trustees, Board of Education Liaison, Lee County Partnership for Children, Triangle J Council of Government, Interlocal Committee, CC Works, and Five County Ag Trade Zone Task Force, Chairperson of the NCACC Agricultural Steering Committee 2017, the NCACC Legislative Goals Committee 2018, NCACC District 9 Director, Chatham Durham Johnston Lee Orange Wake 2009, NCACC Board of Directors 2009 to 2017, NACO Agriculture and Rural Affairs Policy Steering Committee, and the NACO International Economic Development Task Force. Whereas it is the desire of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to recognize the achievements of Commissioner Amy M. Dierumpel to express its appreciation for dedicated service and contributions to Lee County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it expresses appreciation for Amy M. Dierumpel's 10 years of public service as a Lee County Commissioner and genuine interest, commitment, and concern for the citizens and employees of Lee County, and it wishes her continued success in all her future endeavors. Presented the 16th day, November 2020. Amy, we really appreciate everything you've done, excuse me, and for your leadership and all those, my four years as a Commissioner, it's been a lot of good times, and thank you for leading the way, and I'm sure all our board members appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, Cameron. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you. That's good. Thank you. Thank you. I tell you, Cameron, when you read all that out, I should be more tired than I feel. My family will be glad that I will not be walking in the door with an armful of notebooks to throw on the dining room table for a while, but thank you very much. Okay, so I guess moving on to some, we call it old business, but kind of old-new business in your agenda on page 141 is the Triangle Trails Initiative. This is something, you know, I declare, and I'm looking at Commissioner Smith in particular, you know, it seems like it's only been a couple of months since we met, you know, with Commissioner Hutchinson, and, you know, and then you look back and go, oh, my gosh, you know, COVID has just done this weird thing with time. But, and I'll let the manager or Commissioner Smith jump in as you see fit, but, you know, as you've seen in your agenda, this is an initiative that has gotten a lot of traction over the last few months, where you have the triangle, the triad, you know, different trails, and we're trying to get them all to be contiguous, and eventually, once everything lines up, we'll just have this massive, you know, trailway all through the state to tie the mountains to the coast, the north to the south, and it's something that we've been really excited about. It's 14 counties compose the Triangle Trails Initiative, and as you can see in your agenda, and I'll just be quick about it, whoops, but, you know, the counties are Chatham, Cumberland, Durham, Franklin, Granville, Hornet, Johnston, Lee, Moore, Orange, Person, Vance, Wake, and Warren, and, you know, different counties are at different points in this endeavor. But what's really being asked of us this evening is to consider the resolution in support of the formation of the Triangle Trails Initiative. You know, it's one of those things that we like to hear about, that it's something really good for Lee County, but they're not asking us for any money along with, you know, the resolution. And when we met, Commissioner Hutchinson is a Wake County Commissioner, and he's very much a driver for this plan, and they are really hitting the ground hard, trying to come up with a lot of private funding. So, Commissioner Smith or Dr. Crumpson, you want to weigh in any?
If I can add, there's also a water component to it, and we do have the Deep River and the Cape Fear and the indoor trail furnace. This is one of those quality-of-life issues that is being developed to encourage the expansion of, you know, people being active and walking, biking, and hiking, boating, canoeing, and such, so as to get them out. Absolutely a fantastic endeavor, and I think that we should support it wholeheartedly.
Okay, I'll take that in the form of a motion.
Aye, so moved to approve the resolution.
Okay, Dr. Crumpson, did you want to...
No, I think you handled that very well.
Okay, okay. Well, you know, it's in its infancy now. There'll be more to come as we kind of get our arms around it and all the counties get on board, but we are kind of the end of the train. We're the caboose, you know, there's only a couple other counties that need to come on board, so I look forward to hearing about all the plans and activities for this. Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was looking for this, looking at this document, and it was underneath my cover here. I want... I wanted to suggest or move that this document be made a part of our record this evening for, in support of your resolution.
Oh, okay.
You know, the document, I think everybody's got a copy of it.
I don't think she has a copy of it.
You don't even have a copy.
I think just you have a copy. We can pass a copy around.
Yeah, well, let's do that.
Okay.
Now, I think it's very fitting that we have at least some history of the things that you brought us through and helped us with, and that's why I'm saying, one for this county, so it ought to be a part of the resolution.
Okay. So you want to add that as part of the resolution?
Yes, and the record.
Okay.
And for the record.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's gonna be, I think it should be a quick separate one.
I'm sorry.
I think that's two different items. That should go with, along with the one we already did. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just an amendment to, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And if I can ask, would it be a?
Was that for the trail or was that for that?
No, this, he was adding this to the resolution. Yes, I'm sorry.
The city of Sanford, has anyone approached them to propose a resolution?
You know, that's a good question. I know some of the municipalities have. Dr. Crumpton, are you aware?
I'm not aware.
I'm not either.
I know the mayor was at one of the meetings, though, so.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, we'll certainly, you know, we need to reach out to the city and make sure, you know, at this point, I think they were just going for the bigger fish, I guess, you know, and just contacting all the counties. It was easier, you know, than getting all the municipalities to sign on. Maybe that was what they were going for, but that's a good question. We need to follow up on that. Okay, the next thing, that after, you know, depending on where you were in the county, four to eight inches of rain, this is a very appropriate topic based on some of the things I heard about.
We didn't vote for the trails thing yet.
Oh, did we not? I'm so sorry.
We did it all in one, then? That resolution?
We did, we did the resolution.
No, 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 we did.
We did the trail.
We voted for the trail.
We did the resolution.
So we have to do your amendment then? Amendment that Commissioner Reeves added.
I thought we voted on both.
We did.
Did we not? I'm looking at the card.
The clerk says no.
We voted on both already.
She says we're good.
We're good, we're good.
I'm just making sure. I want both in.
No, okay, we're good. We got the trails and the amendment, so we're moving on. Okay, no, it's fine. It's fine. Okay, so beaver management. Is that Dr. Crumpton?
Yes, ma'am, and I am. Dr. Bill Stone is backup if I don't handle this well. Several months ago, we brought this to the board's attention, that the USDA was having revenue issues, and we're going out to all the counties seeking assistance and covering the cost to provide beaver management services, and to be frank, the $4,000 we were paying per year was a pretty good bargain compared to what the USDA was having to pay to provide the service, so I think this year, they actually raised the rate to 6,000, and when they approached us back in September, they actually showed us data that where their cost is closer to 20,000 per year. So they're seeking that amount of money either through the county or through the individual property owners, and as we, Dr. Stone was so graciously offered to do, he contacted other counties, and everybody's kind of doing some things differently. Harnett is paying the full freight, and those around us are basically going 50/50 with the property owners, and so our recommendation is that we raise the 6,000 to 12,000 and cover as much as we can with that 12,000, and then the property owners will have to cover the amount over the 12,000. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I think we discussed before what the service was, but Bill's here to answer any more of those questions, because I am not an expert on beaver management. I'm sorry. I didn't grow up on a farm and get to handle beavers. The only time I've seen beavers are at landfills, and I know they're bad.
And they're bigger than people think they are.
They are, they're big.
They are a lot bigger than people.
So does the first service for the landowner has just increased? Is that how you get the other half?
Yeah, do you want to?
Every time they go out?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you repeat that question?
I'm assuming that every time they go out, the fee has increased? Is that how they're getting the other 12 or other 8?
Well, I think what's happened is they've just, they've kind of maxed out on their budget for the number of jobs that they've been doing. To give you an example, last year, I think they completed 21 jobs total, and we were basically paying for a rate of about eight jobs, so they're just not able to keep up, especially in wet years.
I'm just wondering how they're gonna charge to the landowner?
Well, they'll.
$15 per visit?
No, pretty much, they'll keep the same pay structure, so it's $25 per beaver, and then it's $250, let me make sure I've got this right, and then it's $250 per, I'm sorry, $125 per dam removed and $25 per visit for beavers. I got some cost estimates from other counties and also talked with the new Wildlife Director of this program. He said you're looking at probably, if you had to go with a private contractor to do this, you're looking at anywhere from two to three times cost for the landowner, so it's a significant savings for our Lee County residents.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, we have a list on the back of a memo you and Dr. Crumpton. Does this represent users or members?
Yeah, these were actually folks that used the service, and I believe the document you had was from 2019.
Yeah, it was last year's.
Last year's. So you can see, you know, for example, as you look down the line, each one of these jobs, I think every single one of them has multiple visits, so if you're thinking about somebody, a private contractor going out, they're charging per visit, per beaver, per dam, per mileage, you know, every time they go, so when you look at some folks that had eight visits or 10 visits, like Martin Marietta, I mean, that adds up very quickly, so I think the cost value is tremendous. The other number that we were able to put together is an estimate of 2,413 acres of cropland, dikes, dams, impoundments, and trees that were saved from beaver damage, and that's an estimate of over $254,000 to the county, to the landowner.
I move that we adopt the recommendation made by the manager.
Okay. All right, any more questions or comments? All those in favor of, in favor of the staff recommendation to increase the beaver management program to $12,000, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Do you want me to do Farm City?
Well, I was gonna say, if you would not, if you wouldn't mind reading the proclamation, I just had a couple of quick comments, just real fast, before you do that, if that's, if that's okay?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you again for having me here tonight, just to share a few comments. Obviously, like everything, Farm City has gone virtual this year, which, you know, it's just the world that we're living in today, but we never want to miss an opportunity, even though we can't be face to face and have this auditorium filled with 225 to 30 people, we still want to take this opportunity to promote agriculture, to remind folks of the importance that agriculture has to our safe and sustainable food supply and our way of life in this country. We do have a number of things planned. As I mentioned, we're going virtual this year, but we're not letting that hold us back. If anybody's ever been on a virtual farm tour, it's actually pretty engaging and educational. We've taped one farm tour so far out at White Hill Farms with Anna Jackson, our Field Crops Agent Mitchell Williams went out there and spoke with Anna, put together a great video, some really good insight about their farm. We're gonna be screening that for a lot of our elementary school students. We also have art and photo contests that we're gonna be doing, and we're gonna be doing that on Facebook, so citizens in Lee County can vote this year on who they'd like to nominate as the winner for the youth art and photo contest. There was also a holiday wreath making class held this past weekend outside, of course, with social distancing and all the proper PPEs in place, and a number of families came out and put their holiday wreaths together, and children certainly enjoyed that. And also, our Family Consumer Science Agent has put together a project that is highlighting cultural and our cultural heritage and bringing awareness of the rich food culture that we have here in Lee County, looking at recipes, looking at the way we cook, the way we take care and provide nutrition for our families, and also using this as a way to highlight issues of food insecurity in our community, so we're not forgetting those folks that may not have access, and we want to make sure people are aware of that, and we're doing what we can do to support those who may be less fortunate. So those are a couple of things that will be going on. We've sent that information out already to a number of our stakeholders, but I'll be sure to pass that along as well to Jennifer, to share, to share with everybody. So thank you all again, and I believe Chairwoman Dalrymple has the proclamation.
I do. Thank you, Dr. Stone. The State of North Carolina County of Lee, 2020 Farm City Proclamation. Whereas the American farmers literally help feed and clothe the world by producing a bounty of agricultural products, and whereas rich agricultural resources contribute to the health and well-being of our country and to the strength of our economy, and whereas the growth and development of Lee County and the well-being of all its citizens are dependent upon cooperation and exchange between our rural and urban communities, and whereas the hard work and successful cooperation between rural and urban communities will continue to play a vital role in our future, and whereas the complexities of individuals' environments and the divergence of their activities may lead to a widening gap of misunderstanding, and whereas misunderstanding must be eliminated if our American way of life is to endure, and whereas Farm City Week provides an unparalleled experience for farm and city people to become better acquainted, now therefore we do hereby proclaim the period of November 19 through the 26, 2020, to be Farm City Week, and call upon citizens in rural and urban areas to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of all those who, working together, produce and supply our community and nation with an abundance of agricultural products. We do further call upon all citizens of this county, city, and town to participate in the joint visits, seminars, and civic and social events associated with the successful Farm City Week in Lee County.
Madam Chair, move to approve the resolution.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, look forward to the virtual events.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. We appreciate it. All right. Okay, our next item on page 157 is consider an offer to purchase 6966 Sheriff's Watson Road as surplus property, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Parrish.
Thank you. This is a property that the county foreclosed on in 2013, and the county has received an offer to purchase the property for $1,000, and normally what we do is accept an offer, or accept the offer, declare it surplus, and go through the upset bid process. Just so you know, that most of the properties that the county receives bids on, they tend to be vacant lots. This one does have a structure on it, and the tax value of the property is $72,400, and what's owed on the property between attorney fees and that taxes is $8,876.14. The board can choose to accept the $1,000 and move forward with the upset bid process, or, given the fact that there's a structure on it, it can request that at least what was owed on the property, the $8,876.14, be the minimum bid before we move forward on a surplus property, so.
Madam Chair, move to accept a minimum bid only of $8,876.14.
So you're rejecting the $1,000 bid?
Correct. Rejecting the $1,000 bid and moving to set the minimum.
That can be one motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That was a good recommendation.
Thank you. Yes, most definitely. Okay, the next item is to consider a collateral assignment of the MOU to Carter Bank &amp; Trust for the spec building and Mr. Jimmy Randolph, who's here this evening. Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Pardon me as I get situated here.
I understand.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, for having me here this evening. I'm here to ask you to consider a collateral assignment of the MOU on Shell Building 2 at Central Carolina Enterprise Park to Carter Bank &amp; Trust. This step in the MOU process follows approval of the memorandum of understanding that was approved on June 1 regarding construction and marketing of Shell Building 2 in Central Carolina Enterprise Park. Tonight, you're being asked to consider a collateral assignment of the MOU to the lender on the project, Carter Bank &amp; Trust. As you know, the Shell Building Program is a centerpiece of our economic development efforts and marketing program in Lee County, and the speed to market that it affords to potential buyers or tenants gives Lee County a tremendous competitive advantage in attracting new manufacturing investment and jobs. As you may recall, the MOU for Shell Building 1 was approved and assigned to the lender in calendar year 2018. During 2019, the SAGA Economic Development Team showed that building to more than 30 prospects, and just over one year after the MOU was assigned to the lender, Shell Building 1's sale to Audentis Therapeutics was announced in February of 2020. Their announced capital investment in that project is 109 million, with an announced 209 new jobs and an average wage of over 80,000 per year. Shell Building 2 is underway with our private sector partners out at Central Carolina Enterprise Park. We have already shown that building multiple times, or that site multiple times, and we're very excited about the activity that's going on with that right now. In fact, we have several active projects that are seriously considering that building right now, so I would ask you tonight to consider the assignment of this, of this MOU as collateral to the financial institution as we did with Shell Building 1.
Any questions for Mr. Randolph or comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Randolph, so the second building is in the process of being built?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Did you bid it out to competitive bid for companies to, you know, to build it?
No, sir, there's a development agreement in place for CCEP, and the Shell Building Program is their program, so the building that occurs out there is in partnership with Central Carolina Enterprise Park LLC and Samet Construction, and that is the program that's in place in CCEP. I think we discussed this at a prior meeting. You asked a similar question, and I would say, I was not in my current position at that time, but I would say we would welcome the opportunity to enter into similar agreements with qualified developers around Lee County. In fact, the activity that we're seeing right now, Commissioner, on CCEP is so great that we, I think our next challenge will be to identify additional parks, and we're actually in the process of considering that right now, so I would welcome the opportunity to talk to other developers that would like to enter into a similar type of arrangement, and would be happy to have the opportunity to come back to you all and offer those kinds of opportunities to other developers if folks are interested in doing that.
Just a side note, SAMNET is working with Sand Hills, building two facilities, one for Guilford County and one for Sand Hills in Greensboro, and they're ahead of schedule, so I hope that they meet the demands here and come under budget and are ahead of schedule. The other projects we've had have been tied up.
Move for the collateral assignment of the MOU to Carter Bank &amp; Trust.
Okay. Any more questions or comments?
So technically, we're just approving the MOU in order to continue with the process, similar to the same process as before, and the building is already being built.
Correct. We had approved that initially. This is just for the collateral with the bank.
And on the first project, there was no investment of taxpayer money because we got someone walking in the door and taking the building.
Yes. Okay. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
What's the count?
Three, three.
Three, three.
What?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is the financial statement presentation with Ms. Mentor, and I understand she has a guest.
Good evening. It is time that we are presenting to you our financial statements for June 30th, 2020. You should have a copy of the statements and a copy of this presentation at your desk. The first thing I would like to do tonight is to introduce Sturt Hill, who is with Thompson Price Scott Adams and Company, who performed our audit for this year. And Mr. Hill will come and give you the status of our audit report and the type of opinion we received, and then I'll take it back over and walk you through the various numbers as we do every year.
Thank you all for having me tonight. I thank Lisa for all the work that she does and her staff that makes it easy for us. So, we appreciate that, and y'all were lucky to have her.
Yes.
As always. What I'm gonna go over is, you have probably a loose sheet tucked into your binder somewhere. This is what's called the letter to governance, the auditor's letter to governance. This is where it would tell you if we had any problems or issues or what have you. So, you're not gonna find anything bad on that, but I'll go through it anyway. So, here we go.
Thank you.
So, this is for your fiscal year end, June 30, 2020, audit report. And basically, your procedures are appropriate. Your accounting estimates are reasonable. The disclosures in the audit report are consistent and clear, and in your records and finance records, basically. And then with your, we did not have any difficulties with your management, no disagreements or any of those kinds of things. So, it went smooth through the process as always. We don't, we're not aware of any having to get second opinions, like going to another auditor to settle, you know, tie our opinions or what have you. But, so I think everything went well, as always. There are, there is a section in the audit report that's called the supplemental required information. That part is not audited. It's just required information that's included with the audit report. So, basically, everything was clean. There's no findings. This is as clean as it can be. So, what else can you say?
Good job.
So, we appreciate that. If you have any questions with me, I'd be glad to try to answer it. I know she's got a nice presentation to show you, and she can, those pictures are worth a thousand words.
Yes, sir. Any questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and appreciate you allowing us to do your audit once again this year.
Oh, thank you very much. It's a good relationship.
If you'll bear with us, Nick and I are gonna have to kind of work this. I'm not pointing at anybody other than Nick, if you see me pointing. The clicker is not cooperating with us tonight, so we're gonna have to tag team to get through this presentation. The items that I plan to discuss with you tonight are our general fund activity, our fund balance position in the general fund, our debt position, give you update on our capital projects through June 30th, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions if you should have any. So, in the general fund, our revenues and transfers totaled $76,592,543 for the year. That's an increase of 3.75% over the previous year, or $2,768,771 more dollars than fiscal year 2019. And this is a graph to show you where our revenues came from in fiscal year 2020. As usual, Avalorum Taxes account for the majority of our revenues at 61%, followed by our local option sales taxes at 21%. And then you'll see the next largest portion is coming from restricted intergovernmental revenues of 12%. And the others' revenues make up a very small portion from year to year. So, this is, just takes the categories of our revenues and breaks them down a little bit more and does a comparison to the prior year. As you can see, in most categories, we were up almost all the way across the board, except for investment earnings and in sales and services. And sales and services was obviously impacted by the COVID-19 virus with us having to discount programs and close facilities and everything during the months of March, April, and for the closing of some facilities. We started opening back up, I think, in May and June, but a lot of our programs have been canceled that bring in the revenues that go into sales and services. So, that was impacted there. Other areas, we managed to maintain, and we're pleasantly surprised in our revenues, especially in sales and services, I mean, sales taxes. So, I'll move on into property taxes. As you can see here is a graph of our revenues for five years, looking at property taxes. For 2020, we ended the year at $46,000, excuse me, $46,748,48, which was an increase of 4.26% from fiscal year 2019. And again, this was the year of our, that took, the revow took place and hit our books. So, we did a little better on base than what was anticipated. Some of the cases that we had pending as far as appeals ended up going in our favor. So, that did come in a little bit higher than we anticipated. So, our total assessed value for the year was, let's see if I can get this right, $5,963,586,827, which was an increase of 7.64% from fiscal year 2019. That takes into account growth and the revow. So, we were happy to see that. And you can see the breakdown of real, personal, and utilities. Utilities didn't change a whole lot. The majority of the change obviously came in real property area. So, the next slide shows you the breakdown in the real property between residential and commercial base. And you can see, it looks like they're in 20, that we ended up with a good little growth in the commercial tax base. So, overall, for property taxes, the tax department was very successful. They collected 98.72% of the total levy. If you exclude motor vehicles, it does drop to 98.6. Motor vehicles are 100%. And I want to caveat that, that the state now collects those for us. It's not 100% of collections, though, okay? I don't want to mislead anybody. There are people who are still not paying their motor vehicles. But it has been a good program for us. I know some counties have not seen the overall success with that program that we have. So, it is still, it goes well. Collections acceded budget for tax revenues by $1,388,573. We were pleased with the numbers, considering that the state, you know, did put some things in place, especially for motor vehicles to not have to be paid on time. We have not seen a significant drop in ours, so we're pleased with that. We'll move on to sales taxes. Sales tax revenue totaled $15,640,364, which was a $971,165 increase, or 6.62% over fiscal year 2019. And you can see on the graph there, the breakdown, our Article 39 was very successful, which relates back to what is happening in Lee County, along with our Article 46. Again, it's far better than we anticipated. Dr. Compton and I have, I almost hate to say, have sweat a little bit over these numbers because we just, you know, it wasn't what we anticipated. And, you know, we were both talking to people across the state, and especially Dr. Compton, various county managers that he knew, and I don't think anybody was anticipating the growth that, you know, we ended up with. And we contributed to the economic development items that are going on in Lee County, and hopefully the fact that a lot of people were shopping, internet shopping, or shopping here when they did shop instead of going out of the county. So, we hope to continue to see that growth. But we are still eagerly waiting every time those numbers come in, and anxiously, or as you say, anxiously awaiting because we're fearful of that drop that so many others have seen. So, we'll move on to expenditures. Expenditures and transfers totaled $74,915,606. That's an increase of $3,807,225, or a 5.35% increase from fiscal year 2019. As you, as common human services, public safety, and education account for the majority of the county's expenditures. And on that next slide, you'll see the expenditures broken down by category, and you'll see the five-year history there. Education, it was a large increase because of the bringing on of the New Wicker School. We increased their current expense appropriation quite a bit. You saw a drop in, slight drop in debt service. That was a normal routine drop in our debt service from year to year. Other areas that increased greatly, or more than others, was economic and fiscal development, and that related to the purchase of the property for the incentive for Barat Forge, economic development incentive. Moving on to education expenditures, the Lee County Board of Education accounted for 39.21% of our expenditures, and that includes debt service allocated to them. So, on that slide, you'll see the breakdown between current expense, capital outlay, and debt service to come up to a total of $29,370,988 for education. And then, the next graph shows you the breakdown between current expense, capital outlay, and debt service for the Board of Education funding. And the large increase you saw in debt service occurred last year because of the bringing on of the debt for the WB Wicker School. Okay. Moving on to CC/CC. You can see the breakdown of the expenditures to CC/CC. The total for them, including their debt service, was $5,559,488, which was a 1.88% increase from fiscal year 2019, and they account for 7.42% of the general fund expenditures. Okay, so, bottom line, you'll see here, we had total, you see the total number for revenues and transfers. You'll see the $2 million installment purchase obligation issue. As you'll remember, we actually issued $8,250,600, excuse me, $6,250,000 went to Capital Projects, $2 million went back to the general fund for the Barat Forge deal. So, our expenditures were, like I said, $74,915,606. So, we ended up with a net increase in our fund balance for the year of $3,676,937. Like I said, we were pleasantly surprised with our sales tax numbers. Expenditures, Dr. Compton put the brakes on in March, and the departments listened and took hold. And, you know, we often cut back expenditures starting in March, April, and May, but this year, it was really drastic because we cut out so many programs with the coronavirus. So, we know that number's large, but, you know, it was brought on by a lot of different things, and a lot of savings by our departments, and keeping expenditures under control, you know. So, and we are still holding back a lot of the expenses for the departments. We're not bringing back to them yet. So, to point out to you, of that fund balance, just so you know, when you adopted your budget for this year, you appropriated $2 million, over a little bit over $2 million in fund balance to get us through this fiscal year. Some of that was anticipation of still being a drop in our sales tax that we gladly have not seen. You have, in addition to that, so far this year, prior to this meeting, you had appropriated another $1.3 million of fund balance. Some of that were rollover of expenditures that were in last year's budget that were not completed. So, part of the reason you had such a good fund balance increase last year was because we didn't spend some things. Some projects were not completed that have been rolled over to this year and will be completed. And then tonight, in the budget amendment you had, you appropriated another $60 million, excuse me, $60,828 for a total appropriation at this point, of $3,540,030. So, on the next slide, this slide, sorry, key back up one, sorry. This one shows you your fund balance history from year to year. This shows you your total fund balance in the blue columns, and then the magic number that the state looks at, which is the available fund balance, is your red column. And then I have your benchmarks that y'all, the board has set, being currently 18% for our floor, and then 24%. The green line you see there, that lowest one, is the 8% that the state requires, or requires that we maintain. So, you can see that this year, we, where we are right now, we are above your target of 24%. So, if we go on to, so just a summary there. Our available fund balance as of June 30th, 2020, was $19,262,346, which is an increase of $2,159,946 from fiscal year 2019. And just to give you an idea of how we compare, and I don't know why that came out so small on that, so, we are at 25.71% of our general fund expenditures. Our peer group average for 2019, because obviously everybody's turning their stuff in now, was 35.62%. And there were still some counties in our peer group that had not submitted their 19 statements when that number was calculated. The range for our peer group goes from anywhere from 13.9% up to 58.72. But as I remind you all, each year, we have some of those counties, or coastal counties, that keep a heftier fund balance. And then the target range is 16 to 24%. Some things that, you know, we were able to do this past year because of the fund balance we had were to be able to upfront the cost to the Barat Forge property until we could issue the debt that we did. We bought the Douglas Drive facility, and we've done some major repairs to some other facilities. So, our debt position as of June 30th, we had $87,48,640 in debt at the end of the year. It's broken down into certificates of participation and limited obligation bonds that total $49,695,000. Installment notes totaled $17,803,640. And then our general obligation bonds outstanding are $19,550,000. The next graph will show you how that's broken down between the schools, the community college, and then our general fund debt. So, you can still see that the majority of our debt is related to the Board of Education. As far as your financial policies and where we stand, you have a financial policy that says our outstanding debt will not exceed 2% of our financial policy. At the end of June, we were at 1.46% of our total assessed value. And as far as actual debt service payments, we, our goal is to be below 15%, at or below 15% of the general fund expenditures. And at June 30th, you were at 14.68%. So, as part of our audit, we have what's called the single audit of our grant programs. And so, just to give you an update, between mainly social services, health, and senior services, and those, library receives some grant funding along with emergency management. Those are our major departments receiving grants. We managed over $120,853,732. Funds directly received by the county of that were $9,161,141. That's the portion that actually went through our books. So, direct vendor payments totaled $111,692,591. And I remind you, the state has moved several programs to not coming through us, so like daycare payments we no longer make, and some others. So, while we manage them and determine eligibility, we don't actually handle a good chunk of that money, thank heavens. So, the programs that were audited were the medical assistance program, the One NC Grant, and then the public school building capital fund lottery procedure, proceeds, excuse me. And I'm happy to say, as Mr. Hill pointed out to you, we had absolutely no findings. So, social services is to be commended for their work. They were the main big program that was audited. They are with the Medicaid program. They have done an outstanding job, especially knowing that a lot of them are working, you know, having to try to do things from home the last few months of the year. So, we're, I'm very proud of that department, and they should be commended. Moving on, we'll, I'll give you update at June 30th of Capital Projects, and then at the next board meeting, I'll come to you with an update of where we are through November, probably, if not definitely through October on our capital projects. Stanley Nature Center, you can see that its funds remaining are zero. We actually closed that project during June 30th, 2020, year end. CC Health Sciences, at June 30th, there was still $121,415 left. We took action tonight in the budget amendment to close that project and transfer those funds to the general fund. Those remaining funds will be used to pay debt service. Those remaining funds will be used to pay debt service this year related to those bonds. The Vet Net, the Vet School Facility, there is still, at June thirtieth, was four hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. That project, we are waiting for them to do, the large animal facility that the board allowed them to do. And so they are telling me they're moving on that, and hopefully we'll get that one closed out by the end of this year. Civic Center Project, at June thirtieth, had a hundred and sixty thousand, eighty-eight dollars. Again, we took action tonight to approve those funds being transferred to the general fund for debt service. Excuse me, I said that wrong, I knew I would. Civic Center, we have not done yet. They were waiting to get the invoice for the hand railings on the steps that were added. So that will be coming, and then I'll be able to close that one. We took action tonight to close the main campus project, which had a hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars left at June thirtieth and out. And then the elementary school facility, we ended up, at June thirtieth, we had one million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars left in that project, and we did take action tonight to take those proceeds and split between the courthouse project and the parks project, and to see if we need those. If not, when those projects are closed, those monies will go to be used for debt service. Courthouse renovations project, of course, those projects are just now getting, going really well, so we're still, June thirtieth, we were still holding four million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Similar situation with the parks projects, June thirtieth, we were showing one million, seven hundred, eighteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars. And then the government center renovations, again, is just now getting started well, or will be getting started, four million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars was in the, in the fund at June thirtieth. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams and Company for their assistance with our audit this year. We've enjoyed a good six years with them. We will be having to consider whether or not we will be going out for an RFP with them, with our audit services this year. Also like to thank the departments for their outstanding efforts in managing their funds and cooperating with our auditors and with the finance department. And of course, I need to thank Dr. Compton and all of you for your continued support and due diligence in managing the county's finances. And then, of course, I get the compliments, but my staff also deserve them, and I couldn't do what we do without them, the excellent group. So I'd like to say thank you to them. And then if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Any questions?
Great report.
Thank you.
It's nice to be pleasantly surprised.
Excuse me?
I said, it's nice to be pleasantly surprised with the sales tax. I'm overworked.
Thank you.
Nervous about that.
Still are every month.
Any questions or anything? All right.
I have a monthly financial report.
Okay. Is it okay if we go ahead and do the monthly financial?
I'm sorry, I forgot you had added something. I can come back.
Okay, you'll have the resolution in front of you that Commissioner Smith referenced, so I'll turn it over back to Commissioner Smith.
As we received an email last week from the NCAACC talking about our proposing, asking for proposals to submit for legislative goals, I put this one together after discussing with some of our peers. And it says, "The resolution, Lee County Board of Commissioners, in support of repealing the Seventeenth Amendment as a federal legislative goal, proposal for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Whereas Article One, Section Three of the U.S. Constitution states, quote, 'The Senate of the United States shall be composed of two senators from each state, chosen by the legislature thereof, for six years, and each senator shall have one vote,' unquote. And whereas the Federalist Papers emphasizing the importance of the Senate representing the interests of the state legislature, quote, 'It is recommended by the double advantage of favoring a select appointment and of giving to the state governments such an agency in the formation of the federal government, as must secure the authority of the former, and may form a convenient link between the two systems,' unquote. Whereas the Federalist Papers emphasize in the equal standing of all states, regardless of size, quote, 'In this spirit, it may be remarked that the equal vote allowed to each state is at once a constitutional recognition of the portion of sovereignty remaining in the individual states, and an instrument for preserving that residuary sovereignty. So far, the equality ought to be no less acceptable to the large than to the small states, since they are not less salacious to guard, but by every possible expedient against an improper consolidation of the states into one simple republic,' unquote. And whereas the intent of this constitutional republican form of government was the people, by popular choice, chose the House of Representatives as their direct representatives, and the respective state legislatures chose the two senators to act as agents responsible to the individual states, thus cementing the foundations of this Federalist Republic. And whereas the Seventeenth Amendment turned over to the people the popular choice to choose their respective state senators, thus weakening the foundations of this Federalist Republic. And whereas since the ratification of the Seventeenth Amendment, we have witnessed an ever-expanding federal government imposing mandates, many unfunded, upon state governments, without the appropriate checks and balances that once existed with a Senate appointed by the state legislatures. And whereas President George Washington, in his farewell address, warned the nation of factions and the abuse of power, quote, "All obstructions to the execution of the laws, all combinations and associations, under whatever plausible character with the real design to direct control, counteract, or awe the regular deliberation and act of the constituted authorities, are destructive of this fundamental principle and of fatal tendency. They serve to organize faction, to give it an artificial and extraordinary force to put in the place of the delegated will of the nation, the will of a party, often a small but artful enterprising minority of the community. However, combinations of or associations of the above description may now and then answer popular ends. They are likely, in the course of time, and things to become potent engines by which cunning, ambitious, and unprincipled men will enable to subvert the power of the people and to usurp for themselves the reins of government, destroying afterwards the very engines which have lifted them to unjust dominion,' unquote. Whereas the recent 2020 North Carolina Senate race saw approximately two-hundred million dollars in campaign contributions, of which came from outside special interests that poured into North Carolina, benefiting only a handful of media conglomerates through political ads, thus undermining the true interests of the state of North Carolina. And whereas the popular vote of senators enhances the control of various factions, as well outside interests, making senators beholden to those factions that President George Washington warned us about in his farewell address. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby request that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners address this proposal as a federal legislative goal, the repeal of the Seventeenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, in order to reestablish the true intent of the founders, providing for equal representation of the state in the U.S. Congress, and to end the growing expansion of federal government at the expense of state sovereignty." I move to approve the resolution as presented, Madam Chair.
Questions or comments?
Doesn't this, in effect, remove the general population from selecting their own senators?
Well, the intent was is that the population choose the House of Representatives, the people, as the people's house, and that the Senate would be chosen by the legislatures, therefore allowing the state legislatures to have a voice in the U.S. Congress. So when any time something comes up in the Congress, there would be an entithical to, you know, be in opposition to the state or would impose mandates on the state, the legislature would tell those two senators what they need to look at and how to vote.
That's what scares me. You're still replacing my vote for senator.
It wasn't ever intended by the Constitution when it was first developed. What happened in the 1920s or the early part of the 20th century...
Call the question, you don't know what you're talking about. You're just telling me what you read and what your interpretation is.
That was history. The fact that the Constitution created the Senate...
That doesn't make it right because it's history.
And that the legislature chose the Senate.
Okay. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, Ms. Minter, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before you, you have our October financial report. As you, I will always remind you, our sales tax run three months behind, so do not be alarmed by that number. Tax collections as a percentage of budget through October 2020 are three-point-four-seven percent behind the same period last year. This is due to the timing of when we receive escrow payments from mortgage banks, and I will let you know that we did receive a sizable payment last week from one of the mortgage houses, so that should bring us somewhat back in line. So in the reviewing expenditures, the percentage used target is thirty-three point three percent. As usual, many of our departments are above the target due to the inclusion of the encumbrances. If encumbrances are excluded, governing body, finance, strategic services, IT, and emergency services are the ones over the target. Governing body is overdue to the annual dues that have been paid. Finance is overdue to audit costs. Strategic services is overdue to annual service contracts and equip, on equipment. IT is over the target due to the expenses related to the move to Douglas Drive and annual maintenance contracts. Emergency services is overdue to the expenses related to the pandemic that should be reimbursed by FEMA. And then sales, so that's, sorry, I've gotten ahead of myself. So that takes care of the expenditure report. If there are no questions, I'll move on to sales tax. Sales tax collections through August have really blown us away. We have already collected twenty percent of our budget. Now, I understand we held back on our budget because of fear of the pandemic, but even at that, we are looking at being roughly six-point-six-two percent, excuse me, fifteen-point-five-one percent ahead of the same timeframe last year. And again, our best guess is the fact that we have so much construction going on in the county, that that's coming through and the money's coming back here. So we are grateful for it, but it is unusual. And then countywide, we're up about fourteen point four-two percent on sales tax. So I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Minter. Appreciate it. Okay, County Manager's Report.
Yes, ma'am. You all haven't commented on the financial report, so I will. I don't think the board really understands how good a fiscal year we had last year. On March fifteenth, I was pretty concerned, pulled out my 2009 playbook on how to balance a budget in tough economic times. So we, we did all those things and sent eighty-five part-time people home, cut programs, and basically told everybody not to spend any money. So we sent people home to work, we continued to provide basic services to the citizens, but funny thing happened was our sales tax revenue, which was projected to go down, did not. So if you were to look at the other counties across the state, we are the exception in keeping our sales tax revenues up, not the rule. And continuing our sales tax growth in this fiscal year, it's, it's really incomprehensible what's going on when the state is seeing one percent growth overall, and the larger counties in the state, the top twenty, are really suffering from the lack of sales tax revenues. So the, the new board is coming into an excellent financial situation in a period of time that is very difficult for us to explain why our finances are doing as, as well as they are. And we, we did cut quite a bit out of the budget this year, anticipating that revenues would be down, so we're, we're ahead again already this year. So hopefully, the economy will continue to grow. I know that Saga is extremely busy with clients, still interested in coming to Lee County. We have residential development that's getting ready to start off of Colon Road, and it's really amazing how we're kind of in this little cocoon for right now, and hopefully we'll, we'll stay in that way. So thank you to Ms. Minter and her staff, and all the department heads, very cooperative in preparing this year's budget and doing what we needed to do at the end of last year and to, you know, get ready for what we thought was going to happen and didn't happen. But it happened to probably eighty to ninety percent of the other counties in the state, and so I'm very fortunate and feel good. So the new board is going to be looking at a pretty good financial situation and interesting budget process for next year, so looking forward to that. So in my project updates, the courthouse renovation project, really, it's the registered deeds, the old fireplace building that's being renovated right now. If you went in the building before we started, if you went in it now, you would not recognize the inside of the building any longer. It looks great. The vault is completed. From a structural standpoint, they have a lot to do, but seeing all the brick and mortar in there and everything that they did, they essentially built a vault from scratch in there, it's pretty impressive. And they're getting ready to start work in the historic courthouse and hopefully have the registered deeds in the new building, probably sometime late January, early February, and hope to have the DA in the historic courthouse, because the work over there is not as extensive, hopefully at the end of March. And at that point, they'll really start moving on the main courthouse building and the government center. So this is a long drawn-out project, you know, for all of that, and, you know, it will, it takes some time. That's why they were given all the days that they were given, about a year and three or four months, to have that done. The Douglas Drive building and IT relocation, Kyle is sweating bullets right now on that, but we are confirmed for the move on Friday, December fourth. The move will take the entire weekend, so IT systems will be down, not everything, but most IT systems will be down. The outage will not affect emergency communications for the sheriff, JL, 911 communication, or emergency management. Our website will still be accessible online. We have established a central phone link into the DSS department, and they have graciously accepted to be our switchboard for that day, and will take calls for all the other departments and forward those calls to us, because we won't be able to take incoming calls everywhere we'll be able to make outgoing phone calls. So if anybody's calling a department, having issues, and you get trouble, you can call me, and we will figure out a way to get in touch with those people. And hopefully, miraculously, on December seventh, at eight o'clock, we will show up for work, and all our IT systems will be back up and running. So that's the plan, and we think it will work. The Bob Hale Center is out for bid. We get our bids tomorrow at two o'clock. We had, I believe, seven attend the pre-bid and six do the onsite visits. So several local folks, because of the size of that project, are interested, so hopefully a local contractor will get that project. The coronavirus update, our, you know, hopefully you've been looking at your reports, our numbers have trended up the last couple of weeks. As a community, the county, knocking on some wood, we have not had many employees tested, and so we're very fortunate at this point. The library and Richmond Center are back open on modified, modified schedules. So basically, every department is seeing citizens face-to-face at some point right now, so we have more interactions with the city, with the citizens, so you would believe that that would lead to more opportunities. But the employees are doing a good job making sure they're keeping their masks on, keeping social distancing. And we have lots of hand sanitizer out there and cleaning everything. So we've been very fortunate so far. With that, Parks and Recreation continues to try to come up with new ideas to keep people involved. They're starting a pickleball outing. I guess it's twice, two nights a week, and it's at the Hale Center. And we have a group of folks. We're limiting them, I think, to eight people or 10 people in the building at a time. But they can use the pickleball courts that are outlined on the basketball court there in November and December. And we already have that full. Dance programs are now starting on a limited basis. The department has hired a new gymnastics director, and we're trying to look at ways of trying to get gymnastics back going as well. So we're doing well in relation to the virus as an organization. So upcoming events, Thanksgiving holiday next week, Thanksgiving, you know, happy Thanksgiving to the entire board. December 4th, as it says, the IT move, December 7th, newly elected official swearing-in ceremony, which will occur at the Civic Center, as will our December 7th commissioners meeting will be at Civic Center. December 21st, commissioners meeting will be back here at McSwain's Center. And before you know it, it will be the Christmas and New Year's holiday. Offices are closed on December 24th, 25th, 28th, and January 1st. Madam Chair, that's my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then it'll be budget time.
And then we'll get, then we'll get going.
And Ms. Minter's like, no.
January 1st, it is the time.
Yes, yes. Okay. Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair, thank you for your service to the county of Lee in all these years, in all these years. And thank you. Can't say more.
Thank you, sir.
There's a couple of items regarding, on the 30th of October, I took a trip down to Rockingham to the Daymark Recovery Services Child Adolescent Facility Based Crisis Center for Richmond County. It services all of the counties within the nine county containment area of the Sand Hill Center. They're hiring. Hopefully, they will get everyone in place, and then the state will certify them to provide services for up to 16 individuals. And as I said earlier, the SAMnet company is building the child crisis center for the Sand Hill Center as well as Guilford County's adult facility in Greensboro. And those are all ahead of schedule, soon to be open, hopefully. And again, they have to hire folks, get them certified with the state, and then open up to provide services for the counties. And their budget went from 360 million to 408 million, I believe it was 406 million with the COVID monies added to it. And then next year, they start the transition to Medicaid transition. And social services will be picking up a large segment of the population from Sand Hills.
A lot going on there for sure, and much needed. Okay. Dr. Cuny?
Yeah. Thanks for your service. It was an honor. Thank you. And just keep everybody in your prayers. Commissioner Dodson and all the others that's sick. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your service, Amy, and your leadership the last four years and further back, actually. But through the good times, mostly good, minus COVID, in my opinion.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. And I was glad to hear that, I knew it, but I was glad to hear it from Ms. Minter and county manager that the county's in such good financial standing. And, and we're going to miss you. I can tell already by a couple of votes we've had tonight, we're going to miss you. And, but good luck to you. And, and I'd like to pray for Kevin Dodson as well.
Yes. Thank you. Commissioner Delplaza?
Yes. I definitely thank you for your service to this board. You've served it with excellence. I appreciate the time that you've put into this. We thank you and certainly keeping Commissioner Dodson in our prayers. I want to echo too my thanks to him, the time he's served on this board, the energy he's put into this. So I thank you both.
Thank you. Doosher Reeves?
Ditto to all that's been said about your service. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve under your leadership. There have been some tough times, very tough times. I was trying to recall the gentleman's name that was in charge of Duke Energy at the time we were doing the negotiating. He will never forget you.
I don't know about that.
I won't repeat the comment, but he will never, I'll never forget his face.
We had some lively conversations.
I agree, I agree. But it was for the benefit of Lee County, and you stood your ground, and I think we did well. But thank you so very much for all your time and energy you've put into this county and to this board. Thank you. We'll miss you.
Same here. You know, it's certainly been an honor to serve the, the people of Lee County and, and to help on different levels, whether it's regional with, with Chatham and Hornet or statewide, and then having the privilege to serve on a couple of national committees too. It has been an interesting and educational adventure, that is for sure. And, but, you know, elections have consequences and voters speak. And I have been here before. And the, the one thing that I, I do know, and for those of you that know me well, my faith guides me and I know God has different plans for me moving forward. Staying in this spot on this board was not the plan. I'm getting little inklings of what the plan may be already, so we'll see. I'm excited, I'm curious about some opportunities. But I'm, I'm going to do something that I haven't had the opportunity to do very much in the last 10 years and, and have already started, and that's spending more time with my family. My four children are 30, 29, 21, and 19. So, you know, I first got on the board in 2008, 12 years ago. So especially our two younger ones, they have grown up going to these meetings and hearing about local politics and that kind of thing. So they, they have become good citizens. Our youngest one got to vote for the first time this time, so that was a big deal. But, but they're, it was kind of nice to be with the family again last week. So we definitely enjoyed that. And my phone won't ring as much, and I won't have meetings and have to turn down family things because certainly, family comes first. But, you know, if you serve in an elected capacity, you definitely need to be there for your citizens. But the, the tough thing is I'm going to miss this board. We knock heads sometimes, we do. But we're, we're all people that have stuck our necks out. You know, this is a hard job. It really is. I, I think people that haven't done it don't realize how much time it requires. You know, if you do the reading, if you go to the meetings, if you take the training, if you do the workshops, which I encourage our new board members to do, you cannot be a good county commissioner if you don't put the work in. And, and it, it takes a lot of time. It's, it's a sacrifice. It really, truly is. So I, I have enjoyed it, and it's made me a better person to serve on this board with all of y'all. God makes us all different. But, but if you look at our votes over time, we, we agree on about 95% of the things we vote on. And, and we're here to serve, to serve the people of this great county. So I wish all of you the best on this board and our two new members that are out here this evening. And, and I'm excited for what's happening in the county and what will continue to happen. And, and just pray for your wisdom and, and being able to work together and having a good board. I will miss our staff. We all know that, especially Dr. Crumpton, Ms. Minter, Ms. Campbell, Ms. Parrish, who put up with me to no end and, and have made me look very, very good over the last six years especially. To our department heads, I see a couple of them still here. And, and there are two in particular that I wanted to be able to talk to, Ms. Noel and Heath. I just, I can't say enough for what you guys have done in the last seven months. It has been tough, and I know that, you know. Our citizens are in good hands with you two, with your departments. And I really, really appreciate, I mean, our citizens can't understand how much you've had on you for, for your departments with social services and the health department. So I, I know it's still going to be a long haul, but, but my thoughts and prayers are with you and your departments as, as with all of our department heads and departments through the next few months. But the other things I'll miss, and I'm, I'm trying to give a little cheerleading to the new members coming on, is along with our staff. And one of these days, we'll get back to having staff meetings, you know, and, and the Thanksgiving and the, and the employee recognition that, you know, we do in the spring that we didn't get to do. And, you know, so many of the things, we had to do door, Halloween door contests virtually this year and that kind of thing. You know, Dr. Crumpton leads a great staff and, and everybody does so well together. Those things are going to be something to miss. Go to the ribbon cuttings if you can as the new commissioner. And I encourage the rest of the board, you know, especially in these tough times, you know, there's still businesses out there opening in Lee County right now. And, and we need to show them our support and, and how grateful we are that, that they've entrusted their financial future to us in, in our area. Touring new school buildings, whether it's CCC or WB Wicker, and seeing the excitement there, listening to great financial reports and, and having Dr. Crumpton call and say, you're never going to believe this, and I don't know how to explain it, but, you know, this is what's happening. Or, or getting a call from Saga saying, you know, that, that it, it, it looks like we're a go with the company. And knowing what it's going to do to our tax base and, and the jobs and the opportunities it's going to bring to families in, in our community, you know, don't lose sight of that. You know, it's not a political thing. It's a family thing. It's making this community better for our citizens so that they can have better jobs. And, and the more industrial development that we have, the easier it is for us to lower taxes on our residents over time. That's sort of the game plan. But it's, it's been a pleasure. And, and I love all of you and will certainly pray for your continued success. And, and I'm grateful to Commissioner Dodson. He served as vice chair along with me, and we went to a whole bunch of meetings together and had a lot of discussions on local government traveling. So I'm going to miss serving with him and just hope that he's restored to health very quickly. But with that, I'm going to sign off and let you make the motion for the closed session. All right.
I move that we go into closed sessions per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business. Per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5 to discuss the acquisition of real property.
Okay. All those in favor of going into closed sessions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's take about a five-minute break while everybody kind of, yeah, yeah, stretches. Okay, let's take about a five-minute break while everybody kind of, yeah, yeah, stretches.
I know.
I don't mind, but...
You know, when all this is over and everybody's, you know, got their vaccine and stuff, you're just gonna be walking down the road one day and I'm just gonna run up and just hug you and say, "You know, I didn't get it last year," but... Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.